Good.
Hi, Charlie.
So you can they put this here to mute it when they're getting us or not scuffing up the how this sound got this pretty.
She does.
Now this is the quietest you're gonna hear us. Good evening. We would like to welcome everybody to the Holbrook City Council meeting on October ninth, twenty twenty four at six P M. Um, everybody is in attendance except for Councilman Robert Black who is excused. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Pacheco, followed by invocation by the Associate Pastor, Clifton Price from Saint John's Missionary Baptist Church. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, Father, before we start asking for those things that needs to be done, and those things that we stand in need of, we're gonna thank you, Lord, for those things that we already have. We thank you, Lord, for the distance you've already brought us. We thank you, Lord, for those things you've already done for us. And now, Lord, we ask one more can, Lord, that you would just take us to where we need to be. Give us those things, Lord, that we stand in need of. Teach us, Lord, those things that we need to know. And, Lord, we thank you for bringing us from the last meeting of until this meeting, and only joining from times past up into times present. You provided for us everything we stood in need of, and we stand in bow over heads and say thank you. Lord, we don't mean to challenge the abilities of this council, but, Lord, we ask in the name of Jesus that you would endow their heads and hearts and mind to do those things for this community that needs to be done, that spirits and hearts and minds will be in the right place. For, Lord, that's why we look to the hills from which cometh our help. We know, Lord, that our help come from thee in the along. And, Lord, we ask a special prayer for the election coming up. Make us as a nation to be reminded, it doesn't make any difference who's in the White House, it's about your house. And we pray, Lord, that those who get in will get guidance and direction from above, how to lead this great nation in a manner which you would be pleased with. And then, Lord, as known, that you would just bless the families of each person that's that's here, be the centerpiece in their home, that, Lord, that they be able to live and have a relationship that's conducive to the growth and prosperity of the people in their homes. And now, Lord, we thank you for the traveling grace and traveling mercy that you gave us to get to this place. When we are joined and we get ready to go back to our homes, we ask, Lord, in the name of Jesus, that you would just give those same those those same traveling grace and mercy to get us home safely. And when we drive up in our driveway and see if our homes are still standing, and those loved ones we left behind, Father, that while we were here doing what we need to do for this community, we're gonna know who kept them while we were here. And for that reason, Lord, we're gonna give you the honor, glory, and praise, for you and you only deserves the honor, glory, and praise, these and all other business owners, named for his sake. And those who heard this prayer said amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Price. All right. I'd like to turn a moment over to, uh, Manager Jacobowski-Walts to introduce our new employees.
I am happy to introduce our new Streets, um, employees. We've got Isaiah Aguilera, Christian Thompson, and Paul Sais. And I have to say, they're new to the job, very new, and they're all doing a great job, learning a lot of new things, and hopefully you've all recognized the sidewalks that have been redone. So, thank you for coming on board and the great job that you're already doing.
Can you tell us which department they're in, or?
Streets.
All three, yeah.
All streets.
Paul's with wastewater.
Oh, I'm sorry, wastewater. I'm sorry.
Thank you, and welcome. We're excited to have you. So we appreciate all your hard work. So fantastic.
Are these replacements? Sharon?
I'm sorry.
Are these replacements?
For the, yes. So that makes up, uh, we've got four in Streets now. There are two new ones, and Paul's with, uh, Lance at the wastewater treatment plant.
So these aren't new positions, they're replacements, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, item number five, consent agenda. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to look through the agenda for the minutes, I mean. Is there any questions or concerns about the minutes?
Yes.
All right, what do you have for us?
So, let me get there real quick. So last meeting, um, has on page eighty-eight of the scanned documents. Um, yeah, about the approval of the, um, cell phone policy. Um, and I think it was actually highlighted on that page. And it said that the, the policy was approved on the twenty-fifth, September twenty-fifth meeting. And I was just first reading at that time.
Um, I'm sorry, where is it at on the minutes?
Um, actually, I didn't know if there.
Was it in the attachments or on the minutes?
Oh, so.
It was talking about the, um, the cell phone policy.
Yeah, that's D on here, and it says, first reading, approval of s- city-provided cell phone policy and employee acknowledgement form.
Yeah.
Um, Vice Mayor read the ordinance by heading and discussion was held.
Okay. Maybe that's the twenty-fifth of policy. Okay. That's fine.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I move that we approve the September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, item number six, call to the public for non-agenda items.
There are none.
Item number seven, call to the public for agenda items.
There are none either.
All right, item number eight, old business, discussion of possible action. Those will be second readings. We know we've been discussing these policies, these ordinances for over a month now, so hopefully tonight goes quickly. So we will start with A, ordinance twenty-four dash zero six. I'm gonna go ahead and read it by, by the heading. Ordinance number twenty-four dash zero six, an ordinance of the City of Holbrook, Arizona, authorizing the lease of certain municipal real property to Daniel Hutchins, and authorizing the mayor, the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney to execute said lease agreement and take all actions necessary to complete the transaction. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I move that we pass ordinance number twenty-four dash zero six. I second that.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Okay, Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Aye.
Councilmember Tefoya?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number B, ordinance twenty-four dash zero seven, the second reading. I'll read it by heading. Ordinance number twenty-four dash zero seven, an ordinance of the City of Holbrook, Arizona, authorizing the sale of certain municipal real property to Northland Pioneer College, and authorizing the mayor, the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney to execute said purchase and sell agreement and take all actions necessary to complete the transaction. We'll open the floor for any questions. Hearing none, we'll open the, the floor for a motion.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty-four dash zero seven. I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I do have some, some concerns, the same concerns I had about, uh, this, uh, the last time and the, and the previous time that this came up. Um, and I, I am in receipt of your, your letter, uh, after talking to the attorneys. Um, in section eight, point zero four of our charter, as you outlined in your email, uh, in part says, each sale shall be made on such conditions as the council may prescribe. When bids are required or requested, the council shall have the right to reject any and all bids. Um, not that I have any issues with MPC, not at all. I think they're a great organization. Um, the, uh, statute, uh, nine, A R S nine four oh two, and then, uh, the City of Mesa, Heiner versus City of Mesa nineteen seventy-three, confirms that we do have the authority per charter, uh, to supersede the statute, statutory process in such instances. Um, the caveat to that is if, um, it is a, um, o- only a local issue. Um, MPC is not just a local ish, local entity. They are in at least two counties in Arizona. And the other thing is, when we set precedent, uh, by not having bids go into the bid system, then we open up the door for a whole bunch of things, like land deals that maybe shouldn't have been made. There have been, when I got on council in twenty fifteen, there were issues about a certain city manager way back then that got a bunch of land deals, and it was because of things like this that we didn't go to the bid process. When we just select an entity or an individual, and we, we do have a Realtor here, I mean, if, if she wanted to just go and find all the, um, city properties and do a, you know, say, hey, I wanna buy this, or are we gonna sell those properties to her without going through the bid process? I, to me, that's a huge conflict of interest, and it brings up the, uh, possibility of conflicts of interest. And are we just gonna sell things to entities that we like? Or are we okay with selling to entities that we don't like because, merely because they came to us wanting to buy a piece of property? The other thing is that these two pieces of property, from my knowledge, uh, have never been appraised. We were looking at the assessed value on the tax rolls when this first came, and then I think it was Yvonne that called in during the meeting and said, hey, those are valued at this.
That's not correct. She did not call in. Uh, Sharon had reached out to Yvonne prior to the meeting, and so it was, those numbers were confirmed by her number.
Okay.
So.
But those aren't appraised values, am I correct? And I don't know how that was.
So appraisals are different. Yeah, appraisal isn't a formal thing, there's a cost associated to it, and an appraiser can go in there and give you a comparative market analysis based on recently sold. So it's not the official, like, what a bank appraisal would be, but there is some validity behind any Realtor's, um, comparative market analysis.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I was tempted to make an offer on these properties, just to kind of show my point that we should not, um, forebode the, the bidding process. Because if we had more than two people that were, or two entities that were interested in, in a said property, how are we gonna determine that? I think we should set some court sort of policy, not a case, necessarily case-by-case uh, basis, but have something to where we go back and say, okay, how do we, how do we sell city property? We go to the bid process and just stick with that, because in the past, we've gone with bid process. And now we're not doing that. And years ago, there's some properties that were sold not being on the bid process. So what is precedent? I don't know. I thi- I think we should deal with that. Uh, I, I know this is gonna go forward, uh, tonight, but we really should consider dealing with the issue of real property that the city owns and going with the bid process. Thank you.
Thank you. And to echo Councilman Dixon, I don't disagree with, at all. Like you said, there's lots of concerns. I do feel like we have gotten in agreement, you know, with Northland Pioneer College. We can see that it's a benefit for the community as a whole from the different aspects of creating, um, new skilled labors out of this, as well as workforce housing, things like that. But I understand, this may be a good one, who says the next one isn't? So I, I agree. I feel like we should move forward with this one, but I do think we should maybe readdress our policies moving forward before any other, um, um, assets come available, so. Any other comments from council? Okay, hearing none, we do have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and go to a roll call vote.
Okay, Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Aye.
Councilmember Tefoya?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number C, ordinance twenty-four dash zero eight. Again, I will read this by header. Ordinance number twenty-four dash zero eight, an ordinance of the City of Holbrook, Arizona, adopting the city-provided cell phone policy and attendant employee acknowledgement. And just to clarify again, this is just a policy approval. Um, I'd like to go ahead and read just the first paragraph from the city-provided cell phone policy. That's also found in your attachments here. The first paragraph says, "The purpose of this policy is to provide information for the use of city-provided cell phones and to ensure equipment is used in the most efficient and effective manner. It is the desire of the city to ensure that cell phones are used primarily for city business, that the cost of the city for cellphone use is kept as low as possible, and that cellphone users are held accountable for proper cellphone usage with a minimum of paperwork and auditing." So again, we're voting on this policy. So with that, we'll open the floor for any discussion.
In, in our last meeting, uh, Tim had asked, how many people was that going to affect and what were the overall savings? Was, was there a number?
That was twenty-six employees, and that was in a message I actually sent out to all of the council members. It was a record of communication from Misty Hatch, our Director of Administration and Human Resources. So you have that detailed information and breakdown of what the costs are and what the cost savings are.
And then to clarify again tonight, so, because that number can change at the discretion of administration. So this is not, as far as, hey, we're not approving how many cell phones, who gives it what department, things like this. This is strictly like, hey, does this policy make sense to our employees? So we can ask those questions and things like that. However, that doesn't, shouldn't bear any weight on our, our vote on the policy. Any other questions?
Mike, I have that right here, if you'd like to look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll open the floor for a motion.
Does Mike have time to?
No.
Yeah, I see what I was looking.
I make a motion to, to pass the ordinance twenty-four dash zero eight regarding the cell phone, uh, policy.
I second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead to a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Aye.
Councilmember Tefoya?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Right. Item number nine, new business, there is none. Item ten, summary of current events. I will begin. I'm just letting everybody be aware, on October twenty-second at six thirty P M, there will be a candlelight ceremony at Gillespie Park in honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So they'll have a, it's a candlelight, um, ceremony. We encourage anybody to come.
Oh, sorry, give me the date and time.
October twenty-second at six thirty P M at Gillespie Park. Also, at the end of October, we do have, uh, some French students coming to Holbrook. It's kind of a fun little thing. They're, um, following a, um, French geologist from a hundred years ago, um, Marco, uh, Jules Marco. They're literally gonna fly to Harvard, Massachusetts, spend a few days there, and then they're flying to Holbrook for a few days, and that's their international trip from Harvard to Holbrook. Can't make that up. Anyway, so if you see our French groups in town, give them a good, happy Holbrook welcome.
You sure they didn't mean Holbrook, Maine?
I know. Uh, actually, their directors come out and Bill Jeffers, they've actually have a, out on Bill Jeffers' land, they've actually have a plateau named after this French geologist, which is kind of fun, so they're super excited to be coming out. Um, also, on October twenty-second, as well in the morning, from eight to three thirty, uh, Grow Arizona Workforce Network is hosting an interactive workforce expo, and that is open to the public. It's mostly for high school students and college students, but there'll be different, um, industry leaders and companies on hand showing the different jobs available in this area. But it is open to the public at Menos Gym. They just have, any guest just needs to sign in at the school to attend that. And that is all I have. Um, Vice Mayor, oh, sorry, that's October twenty-second from eight A M to three thirty at Menos Gym. All right, with that, Vice Mayor Nielsen?
The Health Fair at the Senior Center was a huge success. We, uh, we had about fifty or so at attendees. A lot of people were introduced to the services from around the county. It was something that we'll continue on and on. And thanks everyone for their support. The twenty-sixth of October at four P M, we're gonna have a fundraiser, a buncle fundraiser for our, our Christmas box giveaway for the Food Bank. We're anticipating spending two thousand dollars more because of inflation and because of the increase of people that have come to the Food Bank. And we thank everyone for their support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman and Pack? Councilman Dixon?
Yes, I attended the Bread of Life banquet, um, about a week, week ago, and that was, there were hundreds of people there. And it was very, very successful. They had auction items, silent auction, live auction. Um, I think there was some beef that was auctioned off and some brisket. Merrill Young did the, the brisket, and he did an excellent job. He's a really good smoker. Um, and I'm sure they raised enough funds to propel them into the next fiscal year. Uh, they do have their, their new women's facility up and running, and so that's a big relief for them. And, uh, it gives the men the opportunity to, to have mo- a little bit more, uh, freedom there in the main, the main building. So, uh, I highly recommend going next year if you're available. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tefoya?
I don't have anything.
Councilwoman Pacheco?
I don't have anything. I can't think of.
Thank you. All right, we'll turn the time over to Manager Jacobowski-Walts.
So we have the following as a brief overview from my activities from the nineteenth of September to the fourth of October. I had meetings with, um, employees to finalize their Q four goals and objectives. We've done that. Um, I met with the administrative team to discuss these structures that, um, hopefully will take place for twenty twenty-five, so we can at least cover our overhead in certain areas. I met with, um, Randy Sullivan and Dennis Osage of Osage Consulting to discuss an opportunity for a Greater Arizona Development Authority loan opportunity through the Arizona Finance Authority. Um, also met with councilmembers Pacheco and Tefoya and Tim Kelly to discuss arrangements for pickleball courts at Hunt Park. There's ongoing discussion about that whole area and how to kind of redesign the park, um, to add more activities, um, for the community. Um, Mayor Smith, uh, Richard Tisaw, and I met with County, uh, Fire Marshal, Building Inspector to discuss fire policies and building codes for the cities. Um, Mayor Smith and I met with Kenny Larson and the group to discuss a possibility of bringing drag racing venue to the city. We actually had a sound check, if you will, on Monday to see how loud that, those vehicles would be, um, for the residents. And there was really no, no sound that came in. We had, um, Councilmember Pack's, um, husband at her house. She was actually on site. We had several people in town, and nobody could hear any of the noise. It wasn't even as loud as we thought, um, when we were standing there with the vehicles. So that looks promising. Um, Mayor Smith and I met with a Stantec representative to discuss moving forward with the area-wide plan, which was completed by Stantec in June of twenty twenty-four. So we have a plan. How are we gonna use that? Um, we'll have future conversations about that. I attended, um, the following meetings. I met, uh, via Zoom with the National Fitness Campaign. I won't go into it. You have a description here of what that fitness campaign is. Um, but basically, it is a fitness pad, if you will, that we have the opportunity to possibly put in our park. There are some in the surrounding areas. I found out that Winslow actually has one, if you wanna check that out. Um, so I'll have further conversations with them. The one caveat with that is, is there's a match with that. So they don't release financial information until you decide whether or not you're gonna do it, so there's a possibility that we won't move forward with that, as we've got some other activities going on, and we don't wanna constrain our finances at this point. But it's a conversation for future development. Um, I also went to, attended the APS Energy Update last Friday. Outreach in the community. I did contact some at Healthcare to see if they were interested in working with the city to establish an urgent care facility. I did leave a message with the COO, and I still have not heard back. Um, I'm continuing to work on website redesign and initiating a new marketing and branding for the City of Holbrook, uh, with Civic Plus and for the marketing and branding mode, uh, Mountain Mojo. Uh, we had an initial, uh, marketing logo meeting with a couple of, um, administrative staff here, as well as the mayor, just to find out how we're gonna move forward with this. Plans are to have, um, Mountain Mojo conduct a council meeting first to get your input on certain activities. They're, they're used to just, you know, ha- having a workshop to field questions and get your input, so we will, that would be our next step, and then we'll move to public comment, and then just work on the next steps there. Um, I am working on updating agreements and contracts. Um, one is Petrocom. That's the AM transmitter over the wastewater treatment plant. Vertical Bridge Towers is the actual tower over there at the wastewater treatment plant. The Cooperative Park Agreement with the county. I just sent, um, the updated agreement to the county, so I'm waiting on their response, um, on what their, um, comments are on that. Um, next month, then, or next meeting this month, you will have the, um, Arizona Mutual Aid Compact Agreement. Um, that's the, between the City of Holbrook and the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, Emergency Services contract with them. I am still working through the Clin- Clinera easement to make sure that there are no P and Z, uh, requirements or changes that are needed with that, that council had already approved. Um, there was a question about the claim on the police vehicle, so the update on that is the vehicle was decommissioned with a total loss settlement as follows. Base vehicle value was twenty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars, taxed two thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifteen cents for a total of twenty-five thousand one hundred sixty fifteen cents. Our deductible was five hundred. So the total settlement amount was twenty-four thousand six hundred sixty and fifteen cents. Um, an update on the Arizona Complete Health Community Giving Program Grant, our grant request was denied, and that was the one for the, um, Senior Center. So hopefully, uh, moving forward, we'll, we'll look and be able to assist the Senior Center with some other, um, opportunities. Um, I do have a, I sent a, an email for an update for RUTS Motocross to find out where they were, whether or not they were gonna have a grand opening. And, um, Daniel responded by saying he doesn't plan on having a ground, a groundbreaking event. They will have the track building itself started this week. Um, that was actually this week. Um, they've had some setbacks with the person that was doing the grading, but they're, they're starting, and, um, a lot depends on how quickly ADOT can work with allowing to easement, um, and permitting. And they're waiting on that. The track should be pretty much all the way done by the end of next week. So that's an update on that. I do have an update. I think I'd mentioned before, and Lisa put together the available cemetery plots. I just wanna bring that to your attention because we really have, uh, um, a hundred and thirty-one full plots available. So we need to start planning. So, we need to start planning on extending that, the cemetery. So, you'll be hearing more about that once we figure out how we're gonna move that and how we're gonna move forward with managing the the new part of the cemetery. So, key right now, and I've sent all of you emails with an update this morning on our water hall pump in the back. We continue to have problems. This morning, we came in and somebody had damaged the pump trying to, again, steal water from the city, and that is actually theft and, you know, destruction of city property. So, we're working on trying to handle that situation, come up with the new means of covering that that won't be tampered with. We will be presenting to you at the next meeting the possibility of your approval for a new machine that will actually allow persons to use their credit card or prepay for the water. We also plan on moving it from this location over to the sanitation yard, where it will eliminate the traffic and the backup here on the street, as well as moving it away from the children at the splash pad. When the splash pad is open, there's more room for activity over there. It will be inside the fence, so it can be monitored by the sanitation department. Currently, we do have the website posted out front, the flyer that I also sent to you, that we've opened it up to the water haulers during our operating hours, Monday through Thursday, seven to five PM. Individuals requesting water can come in, leave their ID. We'll give them a access to it now, since the lock was actually broken. Unfortunately, Randy's doing a lot of running back and forth, having to monitor that and making sure that whoever's done comes back in, gets your driver's license, and we turn that over to the next person. So, it is time-consuming, resource-consuming at this point, but it is open for those that that need the service. And I believe that's all the update I have, unless you have any other questions?
Well, technically, we're not supposed to ask you questions. They can, we can ask, they can come and talk to you, clarify it, so. But thank you, we appreciate the update, so. All right, and then the department reports, they are in your folders, and we do appreciate, again, having each department give us their monthly update. It's helpful to know what's going on. All right, moving on to item number eleven, a submission of written petition for items not on the agenda. And item number twelve, adjournment, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at six thirty-two PM. Thank you.
Wow.
Well, you did all the hard work last time. Hit you while you're drinking. Nice to meet you.
You too.
And seriously...